All right.
Well said. All right, hello everyone. Welcome to this special town hall on community policing. We are here live from the beautiful historic mural room in the Fulton Police Department. My name is Ahmad Dara. I'm a city council member here. Been a council member since 2018. And I wanted to, I always believe that good governance starts with good communication. And I know there's a lot of concerns lately and questions about policing in Fullerton. And so I wanted to make sure that we put together this town hall so we can ask some of those questions and address some of the concerns. With me today is our co-host, Leanna Mercucci, from the Fullerton Collaborative. And we have also online these boxes that you'll see here, seeing on your screen from their homes, Dr. Debbie Stoudt from the Collaborative, and also a lot of the board members who are going to chime in with some questions a little later. I want to really thank the Collaborative for this effort in helping host this town hall. Our guest is Fulton Police Chief Bob Dunn, who is going to be answering a lot of the questions, giving us some details about the Fulton PD and some of its operations, and hopefully taking questions from members of the public as well. But we'll start with some questions that I will ask. And then what we'll do is we'll go to questions that were submitted in advance by members of the public and from the Fulton Collaborative board members. And then after that, Debbie, who is monitoring the Facebook feed live, she will also see if there's any questions that are submitted through there and we can take those off a little later. Before we start, I want to give the fore to Leanna to give us a little bit about the Fulton Collaborative and what it is.
Thank you so much, Ahmad. Yes, my name is Leanna Mercucci. I'm the board chair of the Fullerton Collaborative. And I've had the wonderful opportunity to serve this nonprofit for many years now on the board and before that as a member. We are a backbone organization in the city of Fullerton to support our nonprofits doing the work in Fullerton as well as partnering with businesses, our school districts, and our city programs. Our main goal is to make Fullerton the best city that it can be and to work together to make that happen. So I appreciate you inviting the Fullerton Collaborative to be a part of this conversation today.
Thank you very much, Leanna. And this event will be archived a little later on. And for those who can't watch all of it now or for the folks who maybe want to watch it later on, it will be on the fulltoncollaborative.org Facebook page and website. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome our chief, Bob Dunn. And we're going to start with a question. If you can share with us your professional and your personal journey and how you got here to this PD.
Sure. So I was born, my whole family's from the East Coast. We grew up in upstate New York. Shortly before I was born, my dad took a job in Nashville, Tennessee. My dad sold uniforms to police officers and firefighters. And that's how I got kind of an affinity for law enforcement. So I was actually born in Tennessee, but we quickly moved back to New York. I grew up there until we moved to Anaheim, California. Had a family that kind of came out here. My dad got a job transfer. On my 14th birthday, I signed up to be an Anaheim Police Explorer. And that was in June of 1993. And I was at Anaheim PD as an explorer cadet and then all through the ranks as an officer. So I left there as a lieutenant in January of 2018 to come to Fullerton as a captain in January of 18. I was here from January to August of 18. And I'm sure many of the members of the community are aware of incidents involving either the chief and my partner captain. We'll get into the structure of the department a little bit later and that'll make more sense. And then I was asked to be the acting chief of police. And I did that until probably the following year when I was named interim chief. And then I was named the actual chief on June 29th of 2019. So I've been here since about January of 18.
And I remember that time and I remember voting for that period contract to be the chief. I think we started at the same time. And could you give us a little bit about the overview of the police department? How it's structured in relation to the city? And what are some of the functions that go under the police department? And especially in, not because I know it's not just policing, it's not just criminal investigation, but there's other things that go under your department. So it'd be great to, for the public.
Sure. So the Fullerton Police Department is a full-service municipal police agency. So at the top of the organization is the chief of police, my position. I'm also the city of Fullerton Director of Information Technology. So I also manage the IT for the entire city right now. Below me are two captains. Both of those positions are currently vacant and they have been since August of 2018. So I operate with a retired annuitant, a retired captain from the Anaheim Police Department who's assisting me in that role when he works 960 hours or part-time. And then currently what we're doing is we're taking all the lieutenants of the organization and rotating them through the second captain spot to expose them to that position. And then when that is concluded, we'll make a selection of captain from in-house people. So it goes chief, captain, there's two of them. We have five police lieutenants in the organization. Four of those lieutenants, and that would be like the first level of management in the police department. Four of those lieutenants are assigned to patrol to cover our 24/7 patrol operation. And we have one lieutenant in our traffic section. And then below that, we have a host of sergeants. I think we have, let me think of the exact number. We have 20 sergeants and those are the front-level supervisors, frontline supervisors for our patrol officers. And they also supervise various aspects of the department. And then we have a position called corporal in the organization, which is like an introduction to being a supervisor, is a testing position. And then we have our officers. And that's kind of on our small inside. So in the law enforcement vein, we take care of patrol operations, which is our backbone. We also take care of investigations, which is crimes persons and crimes property. And I'll give you an example. Our homicide unit or a major assault unit would be crimes persons. And our crimes property unit would be our burglary or auto theft. And they're generalized. So there's five detectives in each area and each group kind of separates the crimes based on who the victim is. We also have a small gang unit of one sergeant and two investigators. And then we have a small, what we call directed enforcement team. And that team is utilized to kind of help with neighborhood problems that pop up. And that's one sergeant, two investigators. Most notably, if you follow us on social media, they recently have been doing firework abatement in the ramp up to the 4th of July. We also have an HLO program, very longstanding homeless liaison officer program. It's two officers whose full-time duty is to work with our homeless neighbors. They are assigned out of our patrol. And we also have a two-person, what we call echo unit. And the echo unit, their responsibility is to work with our businesses in downtown to help with any type of complaints or enforcement that we need when we're not in a COVID environment. And our downtown is very vibrant, especially on weekend nights. They liaison with our business owners down there and also are dedicated to the egress time of that. So it doesn't affect patrol. And so that kind of takes, I should also say that we have a training unit. One of the things that we focus on a lot in Fullerton is that we have most of our, the people that work here as police officers, we hire and we have to place through the academy. So that job is very time-consuming. We have a sergeant, two officers in that unit. We also have an officer who's assigned to the police academy. Go ahead, go on to the professional side or you want to?
Before we do that, just to, how does our PD compare to others? As far as its scope, its number of officers, and the type of work it does, for example, with some of our neighborhoods?
So our, when I say full-service municipal agency, it is to provide all of those services under one department. And so we have to take the calls for services. They come in and answer 911 calls and quality of life concerns. And we have to investigate them on the other side. Our sworn ranks, so we are technically authorized 150 officers. We're funded for 140 and we're currently at 123. And of that, if you, there is 111 deployable officers in the organization today. So and at its height, maybe 2008, they were at 180 sworn officers. So you can see that we're down quite a bit since then. That's your question? Yeah. And just to talk about, so there's a whole nother side of law enforcement that isn't in the police world or sworn world, and that's our civilian professional staff. And there are many people who make a whole career out of working in our records section. Until recently, we had jailers. We recently outsourced that to a company. We have parking control officers, albeit only two secretaries and things of that. There are people who fulfill those other roles and don't need to be done by a sworn police officer.
And then community service.
Community liaison and community service, yes, sir. So that basically gives you the structure of the department.
Thank you. And then one of, one of the things that people ask about is obviously our policies. And I know there are some questions here that we'll get into those a little bit in detail. But where do you derive the policies and practices for our PD?
So for our policies and procedures, we contract with a company called Lexipol, which most municipal agencies around here do. Do that for two reasons. The first one is the intensiveness of the labor that it takes to craft and keep up with policies. We don't have the staffing to do it. And more importantly, there are so many changes in our profession, case law. A judge could make a decision somewhere or the Ninth District Court of Appeals could make a decision that affects our ability to do something. And it needs to be immediately reflected in our policy. And if we don't have someone that's monitoring that constantly, we would lose our ability to be compliant. So Lexipol provides that for us and will send us those critical alert updates. So they take the best practices in our profession and apply them to policies. Now, that doesn't mean that Fullerton can't tweak those policies and make them more Fullerton-specific. But in order to have a relationship with Lexipol to where they will provide the service to us and then stand with us if we were to face a lawsuit or something as relates to our policies, we have to stay within kind of the framework of their policies. And so that's where they're derived from.
What is Lexipol? Who are they?
It's a private company. I believe it was started by a retired CHP officer and attorney. And now it's become a very large corporation that services not just California police agencies, but all of the United States.
Appreciate that. I think, well, because we have a limited time, so I want to go straight into the questions. And I'm sure that we can interject and ask some details. Leanna, feel free to do that. But I'm going to defer to Leanna so that she can start with some of the questions from our.
Perfect, thank you, Ahmad. So I just saw that we had Mr. Barry Ross join us. And if he's ready to go, we're ready for your first question. Under, we're going to start with the category of policy practices and training.
So, hi. My question is, what training do police officers receive on de-escalation techniques?
Okay, so de-escalation is programmed into several levels of what, so I should start by saying, most California police agencies subscribe to the tenants set forth by the Commission on Police Officer Standards and Training. And that is a commission made up of law enforcement officials and some elected officials of which the governor has some oversight of. And they prescribe the training that we're going to receive. So I'll enumerate for you some of the training we received that includes that de-escalation and also takes into consideration those in mental health crisis or experiencing homelessness. So every new officer and any civilian that has public contact receive the two-day, 16-hour course from the Fullerton Police Department on crisis intervention. We also have four hours of post-training, which includes mental health updates and homelessness in policing. Our academy recruits get 21 hours of training related to people with disabilities and during crisis. Our field training officers, those who will be charged with training, those new officers when they come out of the academy, they actually get an additional eight hours so they can help impart that kind of culture to our officers in that training. Our HLOs, the two officers that I mentioned, that are, their full-time focus is to liaison with our homeless neighbors. They receive 95 additional hours of training that includes mental health and de-escalation. Then we talk about our risk control techniques. So every two years, we have use of force training, which includes the ability to de-escalate these things or communicate better with individuals to try to get them to a point where we don't have to use force. Then we also have racial bias training, which includes taking situations from here and trying to get them down in level. And that occurs every two, well, post-candidate occurs every five years, we do it every two years. And then every two years, we implement our own training. So we take situations that have occurred, our officers have experienced, and we turn them into training opportunities so that we can, when we have a critical incident occur, we look at tactics, training, policy, procedures, equipment, and see if there's anything that we can do to affect some sort of change in that so that we don't have the same outcome. Hope that answers Mr. Ross.
And I just want to say that Barry Ross is one of our, one of the collaborative board members and represents also the St. Jude's Medical Hospital.
Thank you.
He's been at St. Jude's, been an amazing support system for the Fullerton Collaborative. And it's been very dedicated to the work here in Fullerton. So we appreciate you very being here for this conversation. And next we have Mr. Kevin Malone from Solidarity.
Hi, Chief Dunn. My question's kind of like a hot topic right now, but in your opinion, what kind of calls could be better handled by non-police officers?
So I think, you know, we have, as a profession, we have undertaken kind of this look at the calls of respond to and see where we can plug in people that have more time or training, a better professional stance to handle those types of things. And so one of the examples that I would give you is maybe our homeless neighbors, for example. We do have an HLO program, mostly as an officer program. But what we've done in the past is partner them with members of CityNet, for example, or a homeless outreach provider, or we have a mental health condition that rides with them. What we've found is a lot of these other professions that have a need to go to someone's home to do follow-up, like our child protective services, they have the skillset that they need to go in there and handle the situation, but it's the part that rendering it safe that they want the police to be involved in. So generally where we find ourselves in those types of situations is accompanying them. They're initially rendered that safe and then allowing the professionals to carry on the work that they do in a very professional way. But I think it's a conversation that we need to continue to have. We, of course, want to get whatever person that we're encountering the best help and they need to have the best outcome. And if that's someone other than the police, then I'm absolutely prepared to have that conversation. What we've, I think over time, the police, when you don't have supportive services or when someone doesn't successfully complete a program or they're unsuccessful at living in a, maybe a emergency shelter and they're kicked out, there's not something that grabs them after that to try to get them back on that path. And generally that will generate a call for service. And so the police have kind of become that point of contact with the individual or the expectation of the community is that the police are going to go out and triage that and try to get them to the best outcome. And sometimes, and I'm sure you all experience it, they're not ready for that outcome at that moment. And so we don't have the time or the resource to spend that extra intensive time with them. But that's why we partner with groups like CityNet or our mental health professionals at the Washington Healthcare Agency to kind of give them that intensive follow-up to hopefully get them on the path as soon as. Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I just want to just follow up here. Recently, we also did, the city, just last month, we approved, part of the budget, a case management position in the city that will also come in and fill the gaps where CityNet can't perform full-time. They'll come in and now we have somebody in the city that's going to be working as a case manager for a lot of the folks who don't go out.
Thank you so much. Okay, next we have Mr. Jay Williams from OC United, who does our wonderful love Fullerton service projects every year.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief Dunn. How are you?
Good, Jay, how are you?
I'm doing well. So softball question here. What disciplinary actions and/or transparency models will be used if an officer engages in race or gender-based violence?
So I think, first of all, we have to denounce any type of bias. We should not employ bias in anything that we do. Whether the impetus for that bias is your race, gender, creed, religion, whatever it is, it doesn't have a place in law enforcement. And so I think by saying it and as an organization exuding that or when we're in our community interacting, not employing that is the first way to be transparent and to show that we would hold each other accountable if someone were to engage in that type of behavior. There are a lot of current laws, for example, that have, so I think the most important piece to remember is there's a Police Officer Procedure Bill of Rights. And that is kind of prescribed, so what we can talk about, what we can't talk about, it relates to officer misconduct. But over time, the legislature has acted laws that have kind of allowed for additional levels of transparency in there. For example, SB 1421, which talks about officer misconduct, sustained misconduct for truthfulness, any type of sexual misconduct in, if officer engages in something that injures someone to the point where they have to be part of the injury, we are to disclose that to the public. And it goes back, it's not something that just started when the law took effect, but goes back in time to any records that we have. I think Fullerton's been very progressive in this vein. And I want to say that this was an unfunded mandate from the state. And it's something that has taken a great deal of staff time to be in courts with because we have to do redactions for victims of crimes. We're talking about, in some cases, VHS tapes that it's hard to even find a machine that can do that anymore and convert them to digital. But I say all that to say, cityoffullerton.com/sp1421, you can go on there and see all of the records that we have produced related to what is required by law to release to our public. We're, to my knowledge, the only city that has put that up proactively on a website for anybody to go in, not even having to ask and see what is, what is out there. I think that says a lot about what our posture is towards exposing what we can based on the framework of the law about officer misconduct. What was the second part of transparency model? I think that also lends to transparency. The other thing that I wanted to touch on here is that there was another, there was like a corresponding assembly bill that went with that that requires the release of the videos. So those critical incident, community briefings that we published, we were the first Fullerton AHC to do that. Those are required by law to be put out and then we do that and it corresponds with the law.
I think part of the question was also one of the disciplinary actions that.
So it's, without talking about specific cases to say, if this, then that, how the disciplinary process works is the case comes in. So I'll use it from the standpoint of a citizen. If a citizen is displeased with the service that they receive from us or they didn't like what they saw an officer do, they fill out our complaint form. Our complaint forms are on the outside of our counter. You don't have to ask someone to get a copy of the form. You don't even have to use the form if you don't want to. You could just email me directly. I have started Internal Affairs Investigation based on a comment I saw next door. I mean, there is a myriad of ways that misconduct can be alleged. That is sent to our Internal Affairs Office. They will do a workup of the case. And from the time that the conduct is known to the department to the time that the chief of police gives the officer the intent to discipline is one year. We have one year to investigate that. And that seems like a long time when you're talking about a lower-level misconduct. But if you're talking about a complicated case where we're doing audits of video and things, that year can go by very quickly, to be honest. And there isn't a lot of latitude for us to take beyond that year. And so they do the case, they bring it to staff. And when I say staff, it's the chief of police, two captains when we have them, and then internal affairs and our data compliance individual, the one that's going to produce the stuff for SB 1421. And we discuss the case and then I decide what the discipline is going to be and then I post it. And so that's how the process goes. And it can be, so the lowest level of, and it's not even considered discipline on our matrix, would be, for example, if an officer backs into a pole and there's no damage to the pole and no damage to the car, I could have them written up and say, we discussed with Officer Dunn, the importance of the safe operation of police guard. That would be what we call a supervisor conversation. The next level up would be a writ reprimand. And then above that would be suspension from duty. It could be the removal of, from, it could be, you could be removed from your assignment and then ultimately it can be terminated. And I'll talk just through that process for a second. So once I impose discipline, anything that causes a monetary loss to the officer, so if they get a reduction in pay, if I give them time off without pay, if I terminate them from the ATOC, I serve them with the notice that they're going to be disciplined and I intend to fire them. For example, they have the right to have what's called a scally meeting with me, where they sit down with their attorney and explain to me why they think what I'm doing is too harsh. Or in some cases, they've accepted the discipline and apologized in some cases. Once I render my decision, I would give them a notice back saying, I'm terminating you. The next level of appeal for that officer is to the city manager. And the same hearing occurs again. The whole case goes from the police department to the city manager's office. The city attorney's involved, they review that and the city manager either agrees or disagrees with the chief of police. If, let's say, the city manager agrees termination was appropriate, the next step would be to go through arbitration. And the results of that arbitration would be presented to the city council and the city council would have the ultimate decision on that discipline as it relates to the misconduct allocation. On top of all of that, after we do those cases, whether it's sustained discipline or not sustained discipline, the Office of Independent Review takes a sampling of all of our cases, in any case it involves a sergeant or above, and all of our use of force for the year. And they look at them all and see if, are we adequately tracking our use of force, documenting our use of force, reporting our use of force? Are we adequately investigating these misconduct? Are we reporting them? Are we talking to the right witnesses? And in some cases, they will say, you should have talked to this person, you should have done this. And then we take that information and we use it to get better at the practice. And so that is another level that kind of takes place after the fact to make sure that what we're doing is right.
Could you just elaborate a little bit more on the Office of Independent Review? And then what are the oversight models within, that they form for our city? And how does it compare with other states?
Okay, so their relationship with the city of Fullerton started after the Philly Thomas incident, where they came in and took a holistic look at the entire department and produced several writ reports. You can go on their website and read them all. Actually have them all on my desk. And so the chief of police then is charged with looking at what their recommendations are and trying to make them fit into the organization. That organization began as an oversight group of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And then it sort of branched out. It's all attorneys. And I will tell you, I've dealt with them since I was in Anaheim. And there is no better group to ask the very tough questions where they need to be asked than OIR. I have a tremendous amount of respect for them. I think there are some in our profession that, or some on the outside of our profession that think that they treat us with kid gloves. They absolutely do not. They will ask the toughest questions and they publish the report. And it's my responsibility to reply to it. So it's not, I don't have input into their final product, they do it on their own. And they're looking at it with a very critical eye. And so they started with that relationship and there was a lot of reforms that came out of that, the way that we track force. And to be honest, we've done a lot more since then. And now what we've retained them to do is to do just by the extract. So they get, they can either ask us for, or we would provide a sampling of our internal affairs investigations. And any internal affairs investigation that includes a sergeant or above. So if you're the chief, you get a complaint or you're the lieutenant, you get a complaint, they're getting it automatically. They also look at all of our uses of force for that calendar period. And they would, they will, one, look at our use of force and say, hey, you found this person in policy and we think it was out of policy. But moreover, what they're looking for is, are we identifying transsooner? Are we looking, hey, this one officer keeps coming up? trans-suiters? Are we looking, hey, this one officer keeps coming up over and over again. What have you done about it? You didn't do anything about it. And we have systems in place. We use a system called IA Pro or Platoon. You can look it up. It gives us those early warnings on particular individuals should they activate the thresholds. The other thing that that system does, and we're utilizing now for the very first time since I got here, is it tracks what application we're using. So if we were to use a wristlock control hold and it doesn't work, then we can look at that report and find out the circumstances. And when we go to that training that I talked about, we can train to the technique to make sure that we're applying it correctly so that we don't have to injure somebody or prolong an altercation with somebody. So the system also allows us to get better at doing it and utilizing it as a training tool. So an OIR has unfettered access to all of that, and then they produce their report, which is put on their website and sent to me, and then I go through it and implement their things or have a conversation about why. In Fullerton, that isn't going to work or may not work, and then that would go to our council.
Thank you. Now, we can move on to the next phase. I know there's a lot of, a lot of people will have a lot more questions. We may not be able to answer everything. I hope this is at least the first step, and we'll do an overview, and we can continue the conversation. I just logged into the Facebook page just to see if there's people are commenting. If you want to ask questions, please go ahead and ask the question. We're not paying attention to it every day. So, all right, moving on to, I think, Barry again.
Yeah, thank you. So you talked about the reviews that you're doing about the use of force. Are you considering reviewing your policies or changing your policies based on what you learned? And if so, what's the process to do that?
Yes. So as I indicated kind of at the onset, when a critical incident happens, my job and the job of my executive command is to take a look at tactics, training, policy procedures, and equipment, and see if any of those things affected the outcome in a way that, hey, that didn't have to happen, and what should we do to change that? So that's on every critical incident and/or when there is a change in law. So if the legislature enacts a law, or if there's a case law where a judge makes a decision, those changes in our policy would come from Lexapro or Provider. But also, as it relates to the current conversation in our nation, we, and I talked a little bit about Governor Newsom having oversight of Post, the police officer standards of training. First of all, he appoints a director, and one of the things that he did kind of at the onset was to say that you're no longer allowed to use the karate restraint hold. And I shouldn't say that he disallowed the use because he can't do that, but what he did was decertify the training that goes with it. So any agency that chooses to continue using that restraint would do so kind of on their own and without the direction of Post, which we take a lot of our guidance from Post, who mandates our training, how much training we're in, when and how. And so on the 7th of June, I suspended that practice here permanently, so we do not use the karate restraint hold anymore. That was something that was done immediately upon receiving notice from Post. So there is a lot of ways in which our policy can be reviewed and/or changed immediately. And I have the authority to change it anytime based on, you know, my assessment of what's going on.
Thank you.
And now we have Camille Hernandez from OC United.
Good evening. So my question is, what external accountability structures are you putting in place to proactively address how implicit bias, racism, and misogyny impact the performance of your officers and your institution as a whole?
So I think the very first piece again goes to denouncing that practice. We are, in our profession, racism, misogyny, any of those types of bias have no place in our profession. And so as an organization, living that every day and how we interact with our community is probably the most outward thing that we can do, right? Training to that and understanding that, we have to have conversations around those issues when they come up. It's absolutely something that we're committed to and we do here. I think that we have a fairly diverse organization, and a lot of those conversations occur between our officers, maybe much more pre-COVID because we used to have briefings. Right now, they're not meeting in person, but those conversations happen quite a bit. The other thing is, when I talked about the complaint process, on the complaint form that you would see is if the person filing complaint believes that race, or gender, or creed, or any type of protection was violated and/or the impetus for their contact with the police, they check that box. All of those cases are sent from here at the conclusion and reviewed by the Department of Justice as a law. So they have, so Attorney General Becerra's office will look at all of those ones where people claim that racial bias, or gender bias, or any of those was the impetus for their contact with the police, or it came up in their contact with the police. And they will look at the quality of our investigation to see that we addressed that particular issue amongst the other issues maybe outlined in that complaint. So they're kind of like the biggest level of oversight and public oversight that we have as we go into that. And then, of course, OIR would review those cases as well to make sure that we are responding and investigating those things thoroughly. And then it's my job as the chief of police, if our officers or civilian professional employees engage in that type of behavior, to hold them accountable. And absent the Police Officer Bill of Rights, I could probably publish it on the website, but I will to the extent that I can.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jason Phillips from Fullerton.
Hi, Chief. I know you already talked about the homeless liaison officers, but if you could talk more about their role, how often you use them, and who they partner with, and what have been some of the results or outcomes of the program?
Sure. So we have two full-time homeless liaison officers. They're police, warrant police officers. What we've done of late, probably in the last year and a half, is we've changed the vehicle that they drive in. There's been a lot of studies around people who are in mental health crisis, or people who are experiencing homelessness and distrust for law enforcement. And so we bought them a vehicle, an all-black Ford pickup truck, and they patrol the city 40 hours a week each. And some days, they're with our outreach workers from CityNet, which we fund, and I'll talk about the funding mechanism for that in a second. And then they also take our mental health clinician, it's a county of Orange clinician, and he rides with them. And they go to the areas where we get the most complaints. We do probably, good 60% of my day is spent responding to complaints about homelessness in various areas of the city. And I think the first realization that we had to make when we created the program is that we're not going to arrest our way out of a homeless problem. There's a lot better ways to go about it, and the police department is absolutely willing to be a partner in identifying and trying better ways to do that. And the HLO program is one of those ways. They have the time. They're not always chasing the radio, so they can spend that little extra moment to develop that trust. What we found is, the more times we go back and visit, the more times we get to know somebody, we might catch them on a day when they're willing to take the help, and then we can work with them to get to a more permanent solution, given the availability of a permanent solution behind that emergency. I would use, I guess, most recently, we had an encampment near Gilbert, Valencia, and that entire operation went without one arrest. There was no reason for us to make an arrest. We spent time leading up to and during talking to the members of the homeless community, trying our very best to get them onto a path of success, letting them know that we were coming and this, on this particular day, we could be clean. And part of that was balancing the complaints of area residents too about the situation there. So we also have a responsibility to do enforcement when appropriate and when we believe that it will lead to some sort of result. And so we have to balance those things when we encounter situations like that. And I think that those officers do it very well. Our partners at CityNet, they're a proven entity in the homeless community. They are, have a lot of connections to get people to a lot of places and hopefully on the best path to success. And we've had great success with them in Anaheim before I came here, and now speaking in Fullerton. And then our clinician, he might as well be here full-time because even when he's off-duty, we'll be calling him, saying, "Hey, we encountered so-and-so again today, and generally, we can do it by name," because that's the kind of report that our officers have in our homeless liaison unit with our homeless neighbors. "Hey, I think we have an opportunity," and he will either send someone, or he himself would make himself available. So we've been able to create those types of relationships. Talk about funding for a second. One of those homeless liaison officers is paid for by the Public Safety Task Force for Orange County, and that's a grant that we got, I think, when Josh Newman was still a senator. And we're coming into the last year of funding. That's what also funded the vehicle for HLOs to drive. It also is what funds my ability to pay CityNet for their services, and so that it doesn't come out of the city's general fund. And then it also, we also found in this task force that it's important to give to programs in our community that have success in this area. And so we also fund what we call community-building organizations, or CDOs, out of this task force, and the chief gets to select those who will receive funding to try to affect either youth violence or recidivism and/or homelessness. So I think that program has helped us make great improvements in the HLO area.
Now, before we move on to the next bullet point topic, which is budget, I would just want to, I'm kind of scrolling through some of the comments here. I just want to reiterate something for those folks who are just joining. These questions that are hearing are, were submitted by members of the public and then were organized by the collaborative, not by me, nor the chief, and then organized in such a way, in fact, I received just a brief of it today, and they were given to the collaborative members to ask those questions on behalf of the public. So just wanted to make that clear because I saw a bunch of people going in and asking that question, where these questions come from.
Yeah, when we published the flyer for the event last week, we did open it to the general public also. So we opened the questions to the general public and to our collaborative membership and answered the questions we have come from. There are more than we could probably get to. We're trying our best. If we have time at the end, we will take more that weren't on the list that we have already, or possibly some live, if we can get through everything that we already have to land.
All right. Yeah, we can move on to the next.
Sure. Next, in the area of budget, we have Paige Fucchi-Morris from Fullerton for Change.
Hello, everyone. Chief Dunn, can you provide more transparency, since you were just talking about budget and how a lot of these programs are not actually coming out of the city's budget? So what is in that $47 million Fullerton Police Department budget? And for example, why do we have 30,000 hours of overtime, which is more than 14 full-time employees? Thank you.
Sure. So the $47 million budget is what's appropriated by City Council. I don't think it's changed since I've been the chief. It's been the same since I've been the chief of police. It, a lot of it is salaries and benefits for the employees, but we do need employees to provide the services that the police department is required to provide to the community. In there would be also the replacement of vehicles, which this, our patrol vehicles are replaced out of the city budget, but our non-marked vehicles and our police motorcycles, for example, I paid for this year out of asset forfeiture funding because there wouldn't have been any funding to change those vehicles out. So they provide those. They provide the initial set of training for the officers that have to go to the academy. And I think I said at the onset that we're an organization that doesn't always get a lot of lateral officers, officers who have experience elsewhere and want to come to Fullerton. We generally find that we have better success at recruiting from people who want to go to the police academy, and that process is a lot longer and costs more money. And there's a host of reasons for that. For example, I'm sure everybody's familiar with PERS. A PERS classic member, so that's the public employee retirement system, is a 3% and 50 formula. In Fullerton, if you are a classic member somewhere else and you want to come to Fullerton as a lateral officer, we won't honor that. We make you, we put you into a different tier, what's called 3% and 55. So a lot of times when we're recruiting at different events and people find that they have to work five additional years, by coming here, they choose not to come. So what we found is, as we spent time trying to find the right place to recruit from and recruit from people who represent our community, we find that we have better success in recruiting from new hires. Well, that costs more money. But once we hire you, you're responsible for maintaining your uniforms. We don't have a uniform budget that supports buying uniforms for our officers. They receive a stipend in their pay or uniform allowance. So generally, those go for, and then we have copiers and computers. And all those items are like what they call intergovernmental charges. So the city will bill us for our IT allocation. So out of the $47 million, PD uses this many computers, and it costs this much to maintain them. Therefore, we're going to send that money over to IT or our fleet facilities. We have to pay to maintain our buildings. That money's got to come out of there, and those intergovernmental charges come out of our money as well. And then, when you talk about the overtime. So in order to adequately police the city of Fullerton, we have a minimum number of officers that we believe is adequate for people on the streets in any given time to have any emergency. We don't get into actual deployment numbers, but we have a 23-square-mile city with a lot of people in it in any given time. And so we have a minimum number we operate on with, I think I talked about at the very beginning of this conversation, our deficit of officers. So we started with 150 authorized, 140 funded. That difference in 10, just for full transparency, when they defunded those 10 officers, was to give a raise to the officers that were, and when I say that, what we identified when we looked at recruitment and retention, for example, was we lose officers after seven years and before 14 years. And that's the experience that we want to keep. And so what the city did was it added a step so that after seven years, you could attain this step and get a pay raise. So basically, thank you, thank you, but a recognition of your time on, for example. And so, but out of that, so I don't remember exactly enough, but I'll use a bold number. It's like a $2 million savings for the 10 officers. They took money out of that, $2 million to fund the unfunded liability that went up as a result of it, and put that into an interest-bearing account to help pay that down at a later time. And the remainder is what the officers with seven plus years on, and they haven't gotten that yet. That's still coming in their contract. So if we're down, those 10 that were at 140, and we're currently operating at 123, we're down 16 bodies. And so we have to make that up somehow. And that doesn't account for anything else that goes on. If we have a homicide and we need to do investigative things, we only have 10 detectives, they're going to have to come in, and oftentimes, that's going to take them beyond their four week of work week. We have to staff a number of patrols. So a lot of that overtime either goes to staffing patrol or solving crimes. The rest of it, we do have, I'm going to talk about, and I don't want to leave our civilian professionals out of this because they also do an important role in our organization. We are down one dispatcher, so if anybody takes a day off, you have to fill it with overtime. We're down, crime scene investigator, anybody takes a day off, we have to fill it on overtime. We're down two parking patrol officers. We don't fill those in overtime. We just don't issue citations that day. Our records area, we're actually going to take them down three bodies to attrition. We'll be down to that probably two weeks or so. And so all that doesn't mean that the work goes away. It just means we have less people to do it. In order to keep up with the work, sometimes you have to fill overtime. But it's not something that we do willy-nilly. But as far as the 30,000 and 14 officers, we are down 16, plus an additional seven civilian professionals, which gives us like a 21% deficit in a department that's already been whittled away over the years.
I do want to also just mention on the budget, that while we're done talking here specifically the police budget, we have to look at it also in the context of the city budgets. So for those folks who have more questions on the overall budget of the city, we can talk about that at another setting. I know I have my community meeting next Tuesday at 6:00. We'll also be in a Zoom meeting, so there'll be a little bit more interaction, and I'll be happy to answer any of those questions at the time. But I do want to just make one point here is that because cities are a service provider, it's the majority of the budget is actually salaries and pensions. And so that is where the bulk of the funding goes. And it is, it's not an easy shift to steer when you have that because you have state laws, labor laws, you have the union and bargaining units that you have to also deal with. So it is, it's not as easy to manage a budget at this size.
And may I just interject one thing about processes related to budget? When I became the chief, and this practice has taken place this year as well, when we prepare the budget, which is usually in December, we start talking about it because it has to be adopted by the council by July 1st. We sit down with the city manager, and I say, "We," it's myself and the analyst that is charged with monitoring our expenditures. And we go line by line, and we've cut $500 for printing. We've cut $1,500 from travel and training. We go line by line and find out ways that we can save $500, $400. We go line by line and find out ways that we can save $500, $400 or hey, this justify why you need this. Those conversations I've heard both years that I've been the chief during the process.
All right, thank you. And then I know that folks, again, I want to remind folks that you can ask a few follow-up questions. I know a lot of people are just, you know, going on Facebook, send your question and we will try to answer it now. So now moving on, thank you.
Okay, Barry, we have one final question from you under the subject of diversity, community outreach and the vision for the future.
Yes, thank you. Chief, does the police department use a problem-solving approach in interacting with the community when called or a site and arrest approach? And if they don't use a problem-solving approach, could it be considered?
Sure. So I would say that our general philosophy is to do the problem-solving approach to the extent that we can with the people that we have. And when I say that, to be really good at problem-solving means we need to spend the time in a particular area to help study the problem and then really work in a synergistic way or symbiotic way with the community to help them solve that problem with us. Unfortunately, when you don't have all the staff that you need, that process tends to break down to some extent. But we go to these calls, the calls for service that we go to, or when we do community policing through environmental design, inspection of a apartment complex, for example, we're looking at it with that problem-solving eye. I believe that probably problem-solving is the most important tool that we use, but we also do have the enforcement tool. I think I started at least one point in this conversation talking about how we're not going to arrest our way out of all of these issues that we have in the community. And so the police department does need to be side by side and lockstep with our community, partnering to solve these problems, but also understanding that sometimes enforcement is the best tool to, for a particular problem or issue. And so we can bring that part to the table and it's part of our tool belt, but I don't believe that it's our go-to tool. I believe our goal to tool is to look at things from a problem-solving way and trying our best to work with the community to solve their problems more long-term and short-term.
Thank you.
Barry, could you please unmute yourself? I think there wasn't muted after the last question. Thank you. Okay, and the last question that we do have from our board is from Lionel Talavera from Hattaway.
Hi, Chief. I've had the pleasure of really partnering with you in the past, but the question is, what's the most effective way for the police department to be perceived out in the community as treating all citizens fairly?
I think it starts with actually treating the community fairly and impartially and doing our job in a constitutional, thoughtful, empathetic way. That's probably the first part of that answer. But you can't just do that by responding to calls all the time. So part of it is being present when our community needs us. So I think what you kind of touched on, Lionel, was when we're asked to come to a particular location and talk about things, issues with the community and partner for long-term success, that we're there to the extent that we can be. I know that that's one of the things that I wanted to bring to Fullerton when I got here was this more synergistic relationship approach to policing. And we do that through hosting events with our community. So I talked about the incident in August of 2018 that was, you know, where the chief left and the captain left. And the very first thing that we did was host a meeting here to, for our community, come to their police department and talk about the issues. And let me tell you, I mean, it's, a lot of people had a lot to say about that particular incident and rightfully so. And so it's not to shy away from our experience with the community. The best way to do that is to embrace our partnership with the community and be present for them when they need us to the best of our ability. And that's what we're committed to do here in Fullerton.
Thank you. Now, I know we have a little bit more time. These are these, now this concludes the, the questions that were asked by the board members, but on behalf of the many residents that submitted their questions in advance. So we, the collaborative consolidated those questions and then the board members asked them on behalf of the residents. The, I know that Debbie is, was monitoring the Facebook feed and maybe, I don't know if you have any questions from specific members of the public that are on our Facebook feed right now, and we are happy to receive those questions.
Yes, there has been wonderful questions and I think one of the, one of the questions was in regards to transparency, there are a lot of questions that aren't not answered and I know because of time, is that something that we could address after the meeting?
So go ahead and ask, ask some questions even if you feel that they're redundant. Let's, you know, maybe you can find another tape on it or find some of the issues.
Okay. So the question was by Mary N., she wanted to know about fireworks and what is the protocol? It seems to be a hot topic right now in, in relationship to the police department.
Sure. So I think I talked about like 60% of my day is spent responding to complaints about homelessness, probably the other 40% right now is spent responding to complaints about fireworks. So as far as the police department goes, last year we did almost no firework enforcement and we recognized that that was our bad. And so this year, what we did was we spent a great deal of time the last six weeks through our direct enforcement team, trying to interdict people who would be selling illegal fireworks to people within Fullerton. So we would scour different sites and we would arrange that and then we would issue a citation and confiscate the fireworks. And we ended up with something like over 1,200 pounds of legal fireworks. We realized that that's not enough. So now our direct enforcement team has changed gears into, they will be conducting surveillances in various neighborhoods where we've gotten complaints and we appreciate all of the feedback we've gotten from the residents on areas that need our attention. And so his name is Sergeant Patrick McGarrett. He, I have asked him to directly reach out to each one of the complaints to get the scope of their issue, what times that they're occurring, so we can be smart about how we deploy our resources and work with the neighbors in that neighborhood to find the offenders. Again, this would be one of those situations where we would be looking to probably enforce as, as that relates to it. But again, our officers have to triage those situations and kind of try to find the root cause and see if we can affect that. So right now, our direct enforcement team is charged with primarily handling that. That doesn't mean don't call us, call us, we do want to track the calls because it helps us for our deployment next year. We also do realize though, and I think the public needs to understand as well, that this particular year with all of the events being canceled, a lot of people are going to be home and they're going to be wanting to celebrate in some way, especially after a long time of being in their house and not being able to go out. And so have a little bit of patience with your neighbors, but certainly call us and we'll do our very best to come out there and affect some sort of situation for you there.
Next question from the midst of the audience.
Yes, we had a question from Jane Rans. She wanted to know in regards to who reviews the policy manuals and how can the community be a part of changing the policies? And also there's a lot of questions about an oversight committee.
Okay, so let's talk about the policy manual first. So there is an assembly bill that requires a policy manual to be online. Actually, it's been online in Fullerton for quite some time. I know Ms. Rans recently communicated with me about it. One of the links that we had was not changed, so I apologize that it looked like our policy manual was not on there. It is and it's labeled, it's under the about us section and it's labeled as that policy procedures, directives and training. And so what I talked about earlier is I'm always interested in hearing feedback. I know Ms. Rans knows how to get ahold of me. Anybody can email me and ask me a question about a policy and I'd be happy to review it with them. But we also have to understand that those policies are rooted in legal analysis and case laws and some of those might, might not be able to be changed without running a fluffle of something. So I think the conversation needs to happen and absolutely willing to have a conversation if you have a question about specific policies. But we also rely on Lexapro to provide it for us. And if we get too far outside of that, then we're going to have to put somebody on that full time to make sure that we can stay on top of the legal changes. That's as far as that goes. I think I outlined a tremendous amount of oversight that happens in the city of Fullerton already, absent any type of other review board. Certainly there are models out there that are prevalent in the police profession and if we can look at those, if that was the director of the emergency council or community. So I'm absolutely willing to have that conversation as well. But I just want to recap that the discipline process alone includes our city council, who are elected officials by our community. We also have the office of administrative review who scrutinizes all of the investigations that take place. But, oh, and I also should mention, and I haven't given them the proper building here in this meeting, but I have a pretty comprehensive chief's advisory council with representatives from most of districts that are also listed on our website if you want to see who they are and what they're about, they all have files on there. And we're going to do a series starting here next, probably be August 1st or so, we will launch it, where we will introduce via social media and video, all the members of those boards. And one of my visions for them, because I have another utilized group within the department, is to allow them to be conduits to the community. So when they're in a community and somebody has a question, that they can reach out to the member of the chief's advisory council, who, all of them have unfettered access to me, they call me all the time to ask me questions about what's going on. And I think the community having a greater awareness of their presence too, would also lend themselves to additional kind of oversight or in, or input from the community.
Debbie, I have one on my list of ones we didn't get to that came up a couple times and I think because Chief, you did talk about how 60% of your calls are homeless and the rest fireworks right now. But it did come up as far as what proportion of violent crime, I'm sorry, what is the scope of what the FPD responds to, especially around all violent injuries?
So the way that I have these stats to share is through our crime analyst that works here. So last year, if you say, from 6.1 of 19 to 5.31 of 20, we responded to 49,593 calls per service. And that does not include calls that were initiated by an officer. So if you flag down an officer or if an officer goes out and stops a pedestrian or stops a car, so all that stuff is beyond that. About 19,000 or 39% of those calls resulted in some sort of violence as it relates to that, from family disturbances to robberies to shootings, things of that nature. And that's at least the way that it's imparted from our analyst. She's actually out because of COVID, so I don't have a lot of ability to ask her to further drill down on those. And I can tell you that our transit-related calls make up about 16% of what our patrol officers respond to and our HLOs go alone, they, homeless season officers went to 1,732 calls or that type, which is a lot for two officers.
Is this information available?
I can make it available.
Because I think it would be very helpful to the public to know.
What's happening in the city.
What type of calls are out there.
And I think too, another thing that often gets missed, and I just indicated to chief's advisory council on this, is we have a crime mapping website where you can sign up for your address and you can be alerted about crimes happening in your neighborhood. You can receive data on crimes that have been reported in your neighborhood. So you have a better awareness of what's going on in your neighborhood.
One more. Should we go on? Two more questions from the, on the Facebook group.
It is the, our remark, and I wanted just to acknowledge your time, Chief, and do we want to continue or I can ask?
We can go on for maybe five, 10 minutes.
Maybe a question from the Facebook would be good.
Okay. So another question, one was why is police department managing IT for the city?
So there was a, early over a year ago now, there was a breach of data from our IT section. At the time that that data breach happened, the director of administrative, so normally in the normal hierarchy of the city services, administrative services for, for those in other cities, it's called finance, oversees IT. Well, that, at the time that that all happened, our administrative service director left and become city manager of another city and there wasn't a director over that. And the city manager wanted an actual sitting department head to oversee it. There were some potential criminal implications of that data breach that the police department was working on anyway, and they thought it best, and I don't disagree, that the person that has the most knowledge about what's happening could institute policies and changes to prevent further data breaches. And so that's why it was assigned to the police chief. And right now, we're still doing investigations, some of that personnel related, and so until all of that adjudicates, I foresee it being under the chief of police until that situation subsided and we can institute some sort of difference there.
Okay, thank you. And there was one, and I don't believe this was addressed by Patricia H., she wanted you to describe the process on how and who does accountability for officer misconduct, when also including captains? So the process of how and then who does the accountability for officer misconduct?
So the ultimate responsibility for handling officer misconduct is the chief of police. Now, there are times when what officers are alleged to have done or in fact do rise to the level of criminality and in that case, the chief, I don't want to say partner because it's independent, but the chief would work with the Orange County District Attorney's Office. And we do that here anytime that we find the case cross over into the potentially criminal realm, we take what we have and we provide it to the district attorney's office for them to do their analysis. And sometimes they charge officers with crimes. And so the ultimate responsibility rests with me. How that process works is when the complaint comes in and I outlined, you can email it to anybody here at the police department, it doesn't have to be on the official form. I've actually started investigations based on comments made on Facebook and or next word. And also you could fill out the official form that we have, it's online, it's at our front counter, it's on the outside of our front counter, so you don't have to ask anyone for the form. And you submit it from the time that the department is made aware of the potential misconduct, the time that the chief of police wants to impose discipline has to be within 12 months. That's prescribed by the police, police officers procedural bill of rights. Now, there are exceptions for what they call tolling, and you'll hear this when you hear people talk about police cases. Tolling means if I submit a case to the district attorney's office, I wait until they finish their analysis on the criminality until I finish my personnel investigation. And we really do that because what their decision is can affect my ability of discipline. So the case will toll, so we get however many months it takes the DA to look at that, we can add to that 12 months if that makes sense. So once that case is completed, and what we do here in Fullerton is the internal affairs investigators are what I would call the subject matter experts on that case, the interview witnesses, they talk to all the officer, they talk to witnessing officers, whomever, the complainant, we do videos, everything, pull, computer messages, whatever we need to do to fully investigate that case and thoroughly invest that case. They take everything that they have and then they present it to a lieutenant who does a letter transmitted. So that's the first level of eyes that says, you missed this or you know what, I see all this and I think that this is a violation of our policy and this is why. And they do this letter of transmission. That goes up to the captains, the captains review that, they do their own analysis and provide that to me. And then at staff, this is how I do it, all of the command staff sits around and the lieutenant that did the analysis is in there and I ask them, what was your analysis and why did you come up with that conclusion? And then the discipline comes from the chief. So I have the ultimate say in how the discipline plays out.
Great, thank you. There's a question by Drew. He asked, what does the chief think that the Fullerton Police Department can do to demilitarize the force?
I think we do a fairly good job of not being militarized in our approach to how we do our jobs generally. Now, there are tools that we employ, there are, our uniforms, for example, here are more of a softer uniform with the exterior vest. Some people think it's great and some people think it looks more military-like. I prefer this particular uniform, but there are studies about officer injuries and things about moving the gear around that makes it more, makes more sense sometimes to have them wearing that. But keep in mind that that process, they pay for on their own. So in order for me to change that type of policy, I'd have to fund changing everybody's uniform. We do have bulletproof vests, we do have exterior bulletproof vests that we would wear on the rare occasion that we have a situation where there's an active shooter or something like that. Everything that we do is usually predicated on an experience in law enforcement that resulted in people, officers and or the public getting hurt. So there are tools that we have that would give that kind of militaristic feel, but I think it's more how we act every day that is not in that military vein, but we have those at our disposal, should we need, at our disposal, should we need to use them. I know we get a lot of comments about, I think one of the comments on there was a 1033 program. We haven't participated in that since I've been here. The last thing that I'm aware of that Fullerton PD received was some Vietnam-era We haven't participated in that since I've been here. The last thing that I'm aware of that Fulton P D received was some Vietnam era rifles that we used to deploy in our cars. We sent them back. We don't have them anymore. We do have a Bearcat, which is a armored vehicle. And I'll, let me explain that for a second. Fulton does not have its own SWAT team. We don't have the need to have a SWAT team full time. We share the SWAT team with the surrounding cities, La Palma, Brea, Los Ancha, and it gives us an economy of scale. That, that piece of equipment is utilized by any of those cities. And the tactics that we employ today in the SWAT world are surround and call out. So in order to start the process, if a SWAT team is being utilized, for example, the burglars that we caught that were burglarizing in the north of the town and they were living in Los Angeles, the officers have to pull up to the front of the house and get on the PA and say, this is the Fulton police, come out with your hands up. We don't throw flashbangs in and break down doors. It's possible, but we don't do that. And our general tactic is to do surround and call out. And we have to do that in a way that's safe for our personnel. And or if someone were to get injured, we have to be able to get them out of there safely. And we do that through the employment of those types of, so. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, that's great. Do you have another one?
One, one just follow up here. So as far as, do you see a need for, for any of this militarization? These tools, I mean, if, if our practices, in practice, we don't use them, we don't need them, then do you think that we, we need them at all?
Well, I think in, in actuality, we do use them, but they're not used in the way that I think people think we use them. And then a lot of that comes from past law enforcement practice, right? I mean, there's images of way back in the day LAPD having the, the tank looking, they would ram through the front of people's houses. We don't do that. But we do need equipment that keeps our officers and or anybody else that we need to be there safe. And in order to do that, we utilize a piece of equipment like the Bearcat to do that. I would acknowledge that it doesn't look great, but it's not something that we use all the time. And I will say, when we bring it to events, kids love to climb in and go up on it. And we bring it to events at our schools so that we try to demystify that piece of equipment for people. Cause it's not meant to be a militaristic, overbearing type of thing. It's meant to be a protective type of object for our personnel. And, and if, in example, if we had an active shooter and you went back to Columbine, for example, that's how you rescue people out of situations like that. So law enforcement does need tools to do those things, which is not something we buy every year, you know, so we use it for a service life. And then it may be another city that purchases it next time that we could use. So I don't think that there isn't a need for those things, but I don't think that it's employed in a way that people think that it is to be kind of that overbearing. It's more for protection.
All right. I have one more question from Ken. He wanted to know, what is your perspective, chief, on why people of color are disproportionately impacted by police escalation? And how does that perspective impact your leadership?
It's something that's ever present in my mind as a, as a law enforcement executive to understand the challenges that are community members of color, or if you're particularly religiously, or whatever it is that in some ways, I guess, makes you feel different than other people. It's ever present on my mind that we need to always be there to break down that barrier. And whether that's acknowledging it, whether that's participating in conversations like this to get, for people to get to know who's leading the organization and understanding that that's not something that we tolerate or deploy. If we find out that that's happened, then we would take immediate action and hold people accountable to do that. I think it's more living in a, in a way, or exercising our duties in a way that show that we have no toleration for people in our profession that would do that to members of any community, let alone our court. And so I, and I think acknowledging that and having conversations with people about it is the first way to do that. But also it's being present and I talked about that relational policing. That's really what cornerstone of what we're trying to do here in Fulton is, is having a relationship with our community, understanding the challenges that they face and working as a department to try to help them with those challenges and not, not being a part of the challenge, but being a part of the solution.
Excellent. Any more questions?
Well, there's, there's a lot more, so I don't know how long we want to go. One was from Amy. She wanted to know what, what mental health facilities do the police rely on?
There are mental health, the way that the county set up, there are mental health providing hospitals in the area. Our closest one is in, has changed names. The name's going to seem, but it's Anaheim Boulevard and Mall. And so that is our primary place where we would take someone, if we were going to place them on a 5150 roll or they beat the criteria for that. But what we have to do is call ahead to see if they're full. And unfortunately, a lot of times these centers are full with people who are in crisis. Then our next stop would be UCI. And again, we have to do the same thing there. And then there's call a hospital in close to me, so we can all do that. So the way that the system is designed is for us to take them to the nearest receiving mental health providing hospital, which is Anaheim and Mall. If there's an underlying medical condition though, if we find someone who's injured themselves or if they've taken action, tried to hurt themselves or something, they would go to the nearest hospital first and receive the care and then be transferred out for the, the mental health issue later, after their condition is stabilized. So our, generally what we would do now is we would just call an ambulance to transport them. It's the most, the safest for all those involved, the officers and the person in crisis. And take them to the nearest receiving hospital that's open and available.
Thank you. I think we are reaching the, our, our time. I know this is going to be a continued discussion. Our chief is available for more follow up questions. I'm sure I'm available. And I, I know we'll, we'll probably host something in the future again, as we continue our interactions with our community and getting more questions. COVID has put a damper on town hall meetings when you have that fast interaction. I'm glad we have at least some technology, but hopefully we'll do something in the future again. And so I want to, I want to thank our chief for this time. I want to thank the collaborative. Thank you Debbie for moderating the questions and to the board as well. And I, I host monthly meetings. I encourage you to join. We have discussions about a variety of things. And please also do attend city council meetings. It is important that we take our arguments and our, our, our discussions out of Facebook and put them in city councils where they belong. And so please come to council and share your thoughts with all five members of the council. That's the only time where we can all sit and, and have an open discussion legally. So please be engaged and, and I know that we're all working towards making sure our community is, is safe and is successful and that everybody has, has opportunity in this, in our city. So again, thank you very much, chief. Thank you again. Thank you, the board.
Thank you. And thank you, Ahmad, for helping, letting us be able to partner with you. This was a great experience for us. And I apologize for all those great questions that are still there. We will address them about the masks, about the Kelly Thomas, and there's other ones about driving and, and some concerns about speed racing. So we'll get those addressed. Thank you.
It's a first step and it's, I hope it was educational and we'll see you at the next one. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much, everybody.